Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Blatche?
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Star Riordan representing the First Congressional United Church of Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I am Pastor Riordan, and I'm from Pocatello First Congregational United Church of Christ. It's a long name, so we say Poki First Church. I'm going to be praying in my tradition, which is Christian, but I wish to acknowledge that we are a community of many faiths and of no faith. All are valid here. If you are not a Christ follower, I invite you into just a moment of silence while we gather and proclaim the unity of our work here tonight. Creator, Holy One of many names and beyond all names, we gather this night to do your work of loving and caring for our neighbors here in Pocatello. We are a diverse lot, coming to you in many colors: black, white, brown, and everything in between. We come as gay, straight, trans, pan, poly, and more. We come as educated and uneducated. We come as privileged and marginalized, and yet we are all your children. All of us reflect your face, and you call all of us your own. As one people, we ask that you grant our mayor, Brian, and our council, Chris, Claudia, Roger, Heidi, Linda, and Rick, to have ears to hear the people they serve and wisdom to act for justice. Grant them the ability to speak boldly when it is time to speak and listen compassionately when it is time to listen. May they act in the spirit of community and of justice and love, never being afraid to put others before themselves. Grant also that those of us who gather here to participate in this meeting speak with wisdom and respect for our council, leaving ego and justifications in our seats. Give them the passion of persuasion, as together we work for the betterment of our beloved community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Somebody tried to take my gavel there. I think so, too. All right, we'll move to agenda item number three, is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for March 2021 showing cash and investments as of March 31, 2021. Jim?
So, thank you, Mayor Blad and the city council members. The city, as of March 31, 2021, has $88,791,378 in cash and investments. That's about $804,000 less than the prior month. There are a couple of large receipts that are listed on page two, one from Bannock County Ambulance, and then the other from Bannock County Tax. Those are a little bit unusual in nature. And other than those two items, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, council? Thank you, Jim. We'll move to B, if I can get back to it on my screen. B, Historic Preservation Commission Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ruda Casablanca to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, replacing Jeremiah Stoddard, who resigned. Ruda's term will begin April 16, 2021, and will expire April 16, 2023. C, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of David Pacharetti. Thank you. Pacharetti to continue serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. David's term will begin April 19, 2021, and will expire April 19, 2023. D, Pocatello Arts Council Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Mark Cooper to continue serving on the Pocatello Arts Council. Mark's term will begin May 4, 2021, and will expire May 4, 2024. E, Council Decision Cheyenne Crossing Final Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a shore plat for Cheyenne Crossing, which subdivides 3.77 acres of land into 22 residential lots, two of which are non-buildable, subject to conditions. The subdivision will be accessed from Cheyenne Avenue and an extension from Arapahoe Street. F, Council Decision Grant Street Landing Final Platte Approval. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the final plat for Grant Street Landing, which subdivides 9.21 acres of land into seven residential lots, subject to conditions. The subdivision will be accessed from Grant Street. G, Council Decision Lookout Credit Union Appeal of Hearing Examiner's Denial of Request for Sign Exception. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the appeal from applicant Lookout Credit Union, overturning the hearing examiner's denial of the applicant's request to install a wall sign at 275 South Fifth Avenue. H, Council Decision Approval of Zoning Designation Amendment for approximately 26.11 acres of land located in the 4300 block of South Fifth Avenue. Council may wish to adopt its decision to approve the request by BVAD Investments, LLC, to amend the zoning designation for seven parcels of land consisting of approximately 26.11 acres located at 4300 block of South Fifth Avenue, from Commercial General CG to Light Industrial LI, with concurrent amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Map designation from Mixed Use MU to Employment. Councilman Cheetham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of agenda item number three, our consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is Proclamations. We have four proclamations tonight. They will be read in this order. Arbor Day will be read by Councilmember Cheetham. Week of the Young Child will be read by Councilwoman Stevens. Child Abuse Prevention Month will be read by Council President Adamson. And Civitan Awareness Month will be read by Councilmember Bray. Councilmember Cheetham?
Mr. Mayor, before I start, this is very apropos. Portnoy Valley Partners, of which I'm past president, the current president Jed Thomas has proclaimed an Arbor Day celebration for the next 10 years, and Portnoy Valley Partners intends to plant 8,000 trees a year for the next 10 years in our community. So let me start.
That's cool.
A proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, mayor of the city of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2021, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to offer efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Okay, Wendy, if you'd like to say a thing or two, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I think as we head into spring and it starts warming up, people are starting to think about what they want to plant in their yards, and I think most people are thinking vegetables and, you know, flowers, which are all lovely and great, but they don't always think about planting trees. And so I think, you know, having this proclamation is just a good reminder of all the, you know, environmental and also economic benefits that we get from trees. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Whereas the Idaho Association for the Education of Young Children, the Idaho AEYC, and National Association for the Education of Young Children, the NAEC, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 10 through 16, 2021, and whereas these organizations are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Pocatello, Idaho. And whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Pocatello, deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, mayor of the city of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim April 10 through 16, 2021, to be Week of the Young Child in Pocatello, Idaho, and encourage all citizens to work to support and invest in early childhood in Pocatello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, if you'd like to say a word or two, that'd be great.
Thank you, city council members and Mayor Blad, for taking the time to recognize the young children of this community and how important education and to support them to better their future, and everybody that takes their time to make the education for them better and a better quality for the children.
Thank you. Council President Adamson?
Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community, and whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas, the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas, child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. Child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behavior such as smoking. All citizens should become involved in supporting families in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, Brian C. Blad, mayor of the city of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim April 2021 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls upon citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
Thank you. Shannon is also a radio host star. I heard her on the radio the other day, so, yeah, if you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Yes, I just want to thank you all for allowing me to be here for what is a very important month, I think, for our community, and we can all recognize that. This mask and the time constraints of this meeting will mean that I won't be talking for hours, like many of you know I could, but I just want to help uplift and kind of recognize the spirit of this month. You may be seeing these blue pinwheels throughout our community. These are a national symbol and representation for Child Abuse Prevention Month that I get to help bring here to our communities in eastern Idaho through the Bannock Youth Foundation. Now, this year, we are working to not just focus on the challenging aspects of child abuse prevention, but the hopeful aspects of supporting our communities, helping individuals face challenging times without the detrimental effects that could occur to our children and their well-being. We're also asking that people not only be aware of Child Abuse Prevention Month, but take that step forward into action to actually preventing abuse by having conversations, getting involved, and just being a part of making sure that the futures that our children have are bright and happy, and so that way the futures of our community can continue on in that spirit. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember Bray.
Whereas Civitan International was founded in 1917 in Birmingham, Alabama, and whereas there is a core of volunteers of over 40,000 men and women, whose mission is to build good citizenship by providing a volunteer organization of 1,300 clubs in 34 nations, dedicated to serving individual and community needs, with an emphasis on helping people with developmental disabilities. And whereas Civitan has contributed millions of dollars to help people with mental and physical development disabilities. And whereas Civitan promotes good citizenship, and it challenges all to think of citizenship as a privilege and a responsibility. And whereas Civitan is recognized for its support in research and treatment of MRDD through funding of Civitan International Research Center. And whereas, here in our area, Bannock Civitan Club, Civitan Twisted Stitchers Club, Junior Civitan Club, and Friends Civitan Club of Pocatello do good work in our community. Now therefore, we, Brian C. Blad, mayor of the city of Pocatello, and Kevin B. England, mayor of the city of Chubak, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 to be Civitan Awareness Month in our communities, and encourage the residents of Pocatello to actively support and take pride in our worthwhile efforts of this international service organization and in the work of Civitan in our community.
Did you want to picture?
Yeah. We're the friends. I'm just the photo.
Oh, we should do that.
Oh, yes, so much.
We forgot about that.
Yeah, Rainbow will fire me.
She will. Did you get it?
I did.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Go ahead and say a word to her.
I just wanted to say thank you for the city council and mayor for giving us time today and declaring, you know, April being Civitan Awareness Month. On behalf of Twisted Stitchers, Friends Club, and Bannock Civitan, we all do amazing things in the community, helping those with mentally and physically disability persons, and we continue doing more and more every year, and we appreciate the acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peter, and I'm the president of the Bannock Civitan Friends Club. I've been at it for about two years, and we just do a lot for the community. We wish we could do Revive at Five now, but with this pandemic going on, it's kind of hard, but we just pull in to do our best and everything.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item five, is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. May 6, 5:30 PM will be a clarification meeting. May 6, at 6 PM will be a regular city council meeting. May 13, at 9 AM will be a city council work session. Other events: annual spring cleanup at city cemeteries will continue through the end of April. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera, they have placed on cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by staff. Compost happens. Yard waste-only composting program continues through the last week of November. Yard waste carts will be picked up on the same day as your regular collection day. For more information, contact the sanitation department. Mayor's Youth Advisory Council will hold an Essentials Need Drive for local organizations April 17, from 10 AM to 2 PM, at the police substation at 800 Yellowstone Avenue, near Fred Meyer. The group will be collecting essential and personal products for community members in need. Half-priced dog licenses will be available during the month of May. Licenses may be purchased at City Hall or the animal shelter. For more information, please contact the animal shelter. Face coverings are required when individuals are in public places within the city of Pocatello. We'll move to agenda item six. A public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2021 April budget amendment. This time has been set aside for council to receive comments from the public posted amendments to the fiscal year 2021 budget. I declare the public hearing open. Jim?
Yes, mayor and city council members. You have before you tonight an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget, and the amount of the amendments total is $6,163,281. There are 18 items that comprise that total, and there are 13 funds to which those amendments would be proposed to you and recommended for your approval tonight. The amount of $6,163,000 appears to be fairly large, but as you look at it in more detail, you'll see that there are grants of about $1,954,000, which means essentially those monies were provided to the city of Pocatello through transit grants, some other grants related to trails, a contract increase with Bannock County for ambulance services, deployments of firefighters, which was reimbursed by the federal government, CARES Act monies, a small grant from the IFT family, and then a contribution that was made for the zoo. And then there are transfers of about $2,735,000 that compound as you move those monies through the budget, so those, as well as the grants, would not be considered anything that would typically either reduce or make a change in the total budget amount. And that leaves about $1,474,000. That would be items that relate to expenditures that would actually decrease the fund balance as a result of you making these amendments, and that's roughly a little over 1% of the total budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the city council might have before you take additional testimony from the public.
Questions, council? Okay, Jim, really quick, have you received any written correspondence in your office that we are not aware of?
I have not received any written correspondence, either in favor of or against, or in any other way making any comments related to the budget amendments.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have you received any in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, we would look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then with that, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, there is an ordinance that's prepared that we will take action on later in the meeting. Then we'll move to agenda item seven, Declaration of Surplus Property 2021 City Auction. Council may wish to declare items identified as surplus property to be sold at the city's annual auction on May 8, 2021. City departments submit a list of items that they consider surplus, and those were reviewed by other departments. The items to be considered as surplus are not needed by any other department within the city. Councilmember Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we declare the items listed in business item seven as a surplus property, and that we allow them to go to auction on May 8, 2021.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, Idaho Transportation Department Radar Grant Application Police Department. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding an Idaho Transportation Department ITD Office of Highway Safety, OHS, grant. A, approved submittal of an Idaho Transportation Department Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of $21,923 for the purchase of 11 radar units. The Stalker Dual SL Radar units with dual antennas are $1,993 each, and if approved, authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the grant. These radar units have the capability of monitoring vehicles in front or behind patrol vehicles while the patrol vehicle is either moving or stationary. The grant requires 25% match on the amount of $5,000,480.75, which will be provided by in-kind service by the Pocatello Police Department, PPD. The police department will conduct approximately 200 hours of dedicated traffic enforcement and in addition to reimbursement of $0.56 per mile targeting aggressive drivers. This, what is this?
Dedicated?
Dedicated, thank you. This dedicated traffic enforcement will be conducted during regularly scheduled shifts by the PPD Traffic Division. Councilwoman Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt agenda item number eight as written and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents pertaining to the grant.
Thank you. We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Piggyback Bid Acceptance for ADA Curb Ramp Replacements, Street Operations Department. Council may wish to consider piggybacking the 2020 City of Chubak contract with M&amp;S Development for ADA curb ramp replacements for an additional amount of, for an average amount of, man, it's going to be a long night. For an average amount of $3,083 per curb ramp, which has been budgeted in the Street Operations Department fiscal year 2021 budget. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all necessary documents related to the agreement. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item number nine, excuse me, Piggyback Bid Acceptance for ADA Curb Ramp Replacements for the Street Operations Department and authorize your signature on all necessary documents related to the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Adamson. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Resolution Airport Lease Agreements. Council may wish to approve by resolution and authorize the mayor to sign the following lease agreements and resolutions for property at the Pocatello Airport. A, Pocatello Idaho Crops Project, approximately 71.8 acres of dry land for the purpose of farming crops. The lease will be for a five-year term with five-year renewal option at the rental rate of $2,365.1 per year. And B, Pocatello TMX, approximately 15 acres of property upon which they operate a motocross speedway with off-road motorcycle recreation and competitive activities. The lease will be for a five-year term at rental rate of $4,507.2 per year. Both leases will include an annual rate increase equal to that of the Western CPI for the previous year and rental rate revaluation every five years based on the current airport property appraisal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number Ten, the Airport Lease Agreement Resolutions, Items A and B, and authorize your signature on those lease agreements and resolutions.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson, and we have a question by Bray, and I also have a question.
It was Lurick.
Oh, it was Lurick? Lurick, second by Lurick, and Councilman Bray.
It seems if we're renting this for farmland, is this part of the application area for the wastewater treatment?
No. Alan is...
That seems pretty low if we're actually doing farming.
It's dry land.
No, but it's still...
So, Alan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Alan Evans, Airport Manager. This particular piece of property is not one that I believe they are putting application of sludge on. It sits at the back of the airport, and it is dry farm ground. No improvements to it at all. But yeah, it's at the back side of the airport.
And $30 something an acre doesn't seem like...
Yeah, it's pretty low. This weight was set on a previous appraisal that we had had at some point. We're getting another one, but that's not in place yet, so, yeah. Good long-term tenant, they've been good with this.
Alan, I'm just really interested in the one cent per year and the two cent per year.
Me, too.
I'm not sure why it's $23.6501 and $02.
I would love to have an answer.
I'm good with that. Every penny counts.
I'd be annoyed.
I know, I would, too.
That is the exact calculation of 1.7% increase.
Probably is what it is, yes. The CPI.
It's good that it's exact.
But you know, the two cents might be...
That's right. That's right. All right.
Don't give anybody's two cents on that.
It's a 45.07, but not the two cents.
That's right. Okay, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, An Ordinance Approving an Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 Appropriations Ordinance, Increasing the Total Fiscal Year Expenditures by $6,163,0281 to account for additional revenues including grant funds received by the city to be used previously unappropriated cash balance for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read? Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 11, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I think I have the details. Actually, in this case, the whole ordinance, you can't be published, no, just the summary. Because it's a financial one.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 11, be read on three separate days.
No. Please, no, no.
I take it back.
I move ordinance, Agenda Item Number 11, be read in its entirety, correct?
Only by title.
Only by title and placed on final, oh, and placed on final passage for publication, and the entire ordinance sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was going to sit up and watch Jared stand in front of City Hall.
At least it's a short one.
That's right. Okay, so we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, An Ordinance Approving an Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 Appropriations Ordinance, Increasing the Total Fiscal Year Expenditures by $6,163,0281 to account for additional revenues including grant funds received by the city to be used previously unappropriated cash balance for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read? Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 11, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I think I have the details. Actually, in this case, the whole ordinance, you can't be published, no, just the summary. Because it's a financial one.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 11, be read on three separate days.
No. Please, no, no.
I take it back.
I move ordinance, Agenda Item Number 11, be read in its entirety, correct?
Only by title.
Only by title and placed on final, oh, and placed on final passage for publication, and the entire ordinance sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. My name is Peter, and I'm the president of the Bannock Civitan Friends Club. I've been at it for about two years, and we just do a lot for the community. We wish we could do Revive at Five now, but with this pandemic going on, it's kind of hard, but we just pull in to do our best and everything. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. May 6, 5:30 PM will be a clarification meeting. May 6, at 6 PM will be a regular city council meeting. May 13, at 9 AM will be a city council work session. Other events, annual spring cleanup at city cemeteries will continue through the end of April. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera, they have placed on cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by staff. Compost happens. Yard waste only composting program continues through the last week of November. Yard waste carts will be picked up on the same day as your regular collection day. For more information, contact the sanitation department. Mayor's Youth Advisory Council will hold an ESSENTIALS Need Drive for local organizations April 17, from 10 AM to 2 PM, at the police substation at 800 Yellowstone Avenue, near Fred Meyer.